I'm going to call this budget hearing to order with seven members present.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
But a motion, a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It's opposed, so that is motion passed at seven zero. We are ready for the budget review. Dr. Stroh.
I prefer to do presentations from here because I always don't know who to look at when I'm sitting there, so I hope, I hope that works for you. You'll see on the screen that we have code ninety-nine, that's what we published in the newspaper. And so I'm just gonna hit some highlights. And Teri has done an outstanding job and she's really the expert, so I would just ask that if I misspeak or, or if somebody has a hard question, we will call on her. So what you see is our proposed budget for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. The budget planning process is a continuing process. Some would call it guess and check because it's never solid. We begin tracking what our legislature is doing in regards to school finance. We typically don't have a really good idea about what the legislature is gonna fund schools until May or June, sometimes later. We build a budget is, is really a guess and, and we try to guess high. It's better in terms of our mill levy and so on if we guess a little high, so that's important to remember. The state legislature funds us on what we call base state aid per pupil. You might see that as B-S-A-P-P. If you see that, that means that we get a certain amount for every single kid. Well, every single full-time equivalent. A kindergarten kid is a point five, we have high school kids, different kids might be a point seven and so on depending on career, technical ed and so on. But that is based on our September twentieth count. And this year, our state, base state aid per pupil is thirty-eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. That is a decrease from the high in two thousand eight, two thousand nine of four thousand four hundred dollars. So you can see over the years that we've taken a significant hit, excuse me, on base state aid per pupil. We do get waitings for students and that just means that because it costs more to educate certain students, then they have a little waiting added to them. For example, it costs more to educate a student who lives more than two point five miles away from the school because we have to transport buses, bus drivers, gas and so on, costs money. So we get a little waiting for that. Other waitings include English language learning, CTEC, non-proficient students, virtual students, special education students, free and reduced students. Each one of those things is worth just a little bit to add on to our base state aid per pupil. We also have local funding sources and we call it the mill levy. This has been very, very stable in this district. For years, there was no increase in spite of increased rates of insurance and, and just basic operating costs, so I think the community can celebrate that. We did raise the mill levy this year by one point two eight due to decrease in valuation and increase in some of our operating costs. The mill rate is watched very carefully by us and by our community. It's critical that we do not stunt our community's growth, but also be able to fund our schools. Federal funding is a third funding source and this money includes at-risk title funds and sped funding. Each of these funds must be spent a certain way. There are lots of legal regulations for those funds. The last thing I'd like to talk to you about is why we have reserves. You'll see in our budget, and I know that the legislature has talked about this a number of times, why do we have cash reserves? Why do we have contingency reserves? A number of reasons. We don't get our special education funding in a, at the time that we need to spend it. So we have to have money in reserves to be able to pay our special education costs, our teachers, our transportation, our paras and so on. We have reserves also so that we can pay our people and continue to operate. There have been times in past years, and a couple of years ago, it was pretty common where the state didn't fund schools, they would send our funding two or three or four weeks late. We have to be able to pay our people, so we've got to have that, those cash reserves to be able to do that. The last thing I would like to talk about in terms of budget before I ask for questions is that at our next board meeting, we will need a resolution for our capital outlay mill levy. You'll remember that there's a five-year max, we're at our five-year max. And currently, we are levying five mills for our capital outlay, eight mills is the max. So with that, I would ask what questions you might have.
Are there any questions from members of the board? We do have about five minutes before the, before the close of the, the scheduled time of the start of the record of the board meeting, so we do have about five minutes that we would be willing to accept questions from members of the audience. Hearing none.
Move that we adjourn the budget hearing.
A motion to adjourn, a motion by Brian and a second by Susan to adjourn the budget hearing. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, this, this hearing is adjourned. We will start the board meeting in about five minutes. Clock. I give up on the computer.
We have one up there.
I'm gonna read it from there, thank you very much. With seven members present, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay, so.
Second.
Well, you can't do that, they're two separate motions.
They're two separate items. Yeah. Motion to approve the agenda by Brian, second by Tim.
I move we adjourn. Second.
I'm just kidding. The way my day is gone, I would take that.
You're doing fine.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passed at seven zero. Okay, now I would have taken the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
Second.
But I have a question, on July eighth, how could Dennis have moved and seconded the same motion?
That's how he, he's.
He goes so fast. He probably did.
And if I recall, I seconded that much.
I think he did, actually. Okay, so this time the consent.
I can't beat Dennis, he's too quick.
This time, the consent agenda had been, did you want to, did you want that corrected?
I, I, you guys go so fast, I had no idea who did second.
It probably should be corrected, yes.
Yes, it should be corrected. Can we correct that? So the second goes to Bill. With that correction, do we have, all those in favor, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Did you vote yes, Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Reports and presentations, board goals, Dr. Stroh.
On August third, our board worked for four hours. I made them work really hard, not that they're not used to that, I'm sure they're very used to that, but we went through some adaptive school processes to arrive at our two goals. And we had lots of great discussion about, here's what our situation is, so what do we need to do, and then here's what we're gonna do. And that's the process basically that we went through to get to our goals. Our intention was to define a goal for facilities, for student achievement, for finance and for communications. As we worked through these goals, we decided that these two goals encompassed all four of those things. So the first one is, and I would ask each of the board members to correct anything that, that maybe I didn't get right, I would like you to have some discussion about the, those goals separately, and we can certainly correct any kind of wording that, that you wish to correct. But the first goal has to do with student achievement, and we know that curriculum, instruction and assessment is paramount for student achievement. And so as we talked through, we looked at our achievement scores over the last few years and decided on this goal, and it reads this way. USD two ninety will have a plan for curriculum, instruction and assessment that is continually measured, analyzed and refocused. That doesn't mean we don't have a plan now, that just means that we're gonna have a strong plan and every year it's gonna get stronger and stronger as we learn more about Kansas college and career standards. So I'll stop there for discussion or questions the board might have about goal one.
I would, are there any, anybody have any questions about that particular goal?
No, I think the board felt like we really needed to look at it and use data to drive what the plan is, and then as the students test against themselves, then we know how to remeasure and see if it's working or not working. And so I don't know, I thought it was a good goal.
Inherent in, in that particular goal is some, is some accountability and to, to the curriculum and to our assessment system and to the board to expect that we're measuring what we're, what we're trying to teach and that we're analyzing those results and refocusing our efforts based on that, on that data. So we're basically moving to a, a very data-driven approach to what we're doing. And I think the board felt very strongly about that in our discussions.
We also talked about how important it is that as a board that we have sort of a broad goal that directs buildings, that in fact, we are a school system and not a system of schools, meaning that we're one big district and we need to focus on certain things, these are the two things that we're gonna focus on. And then, in, in each building, they will operationalize these goals. For example, the plan for curriculum and instruction and assessment in each building will be similar, but not exactly, excuse me, but not exactly the same because different buildings have different needs. And we're not asking or requesting or requiring a cookie cutter goal for every building. What we're saying is that here is our board goal and principals and staff members in each building know what they need to do in their own building to reach this goal, so that together, we're going down the same path. Other questions you might have about goal one?
Did I understand when we talked about these goals, that the word refocus meant that we would look at what we're doing in our curriculum and make sure that that particular curriculum, whether it was math, social studies, science, whatever, was meeting the needs of the district and not wait just for a five-year plan, but really refocus and see if it's doing that.
Yes, absolutely. That was exactly what we talked about, that we would continually refocus and, and tighten and make it stronger.
Thank you. I'm glad you clarified that, that's absolutely true.
Any other questions for Dr. Stroh on the first board goal?
Okay, goal two. We talked a lot about our facilities and we reviewed our community survey, and I'll be doing a report next meeting on August twenty-second about our facilities and about the survey. But we looked at that and we talked a lot about the historical perspective of why things are the way they are. And we talked about that while it's important to understand the past, that one of the things that we need to do is acknowledge it and then understand that we need to give up the hope that we can ever change the past and what we need to do now for our kids in the future, for our kids now and for future generations is do the very, very best we can in terms of facilities for those kids. We're not saying that we're going out for a bond issue of any kind, what we're saying is that we want ideas, we wanna talk to the community, we need all the ideas from everyone on the table because that's how we get the solutions that are best for our kids. So with that in mind, we went through the same process of here's what, so what and now what, and arrived at goal two, which is USD two ninety will communicate the facts and needs to our community. And, and that is our, the facts and needs for facilities, for financial, for whatever it is that we need in this district, all of our facts and all of our needs. That goal came out of the work we were doing with facilities, but as a couple of our board members said on August third, you know, this is really what we need to do all of the time. So that was our second goal. So discussion, questions you might have about that goal?
The only thing I would question, I don't know, I'm not gonna wordsmith it, but I'm gonna make the suggestion is that it, it says the facts and needs, but it doesn't really say the facts and needs about what.
You're right.
And I think, you know, you clarified very well in your, in your presentation that the facts and needs that we're talking about are district needs as a whole, whether they be financial needs, whether they be facilities needs, whether they be personnel, personnel needs, all of those things. And that, that we wanna make sure that we're communicating to the community, say that twice, what those facts are.
Right.
And what are, what we, what we see our needs are, and then invite the community to help us meet those needs.
So, Mr. White, are you proposing that we say USD two ninety will communicate the facts and needs of our, and then we could put in parentheses, financial, facility, what's the other one that you said?
Personnel.
Personnel wants and, or, or facts and needs?
How about of our district?
Of our district?
Of our district to the community.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I'm proposing.
Okay.
Of our district to the community.
What are the methods of communication you're gonna use to communicate to the community?
I have a number of, of things in mind, but just like I said earlier, all ideas are welcome on the table, so as you have ideas about ways that I or we can communicate, I would certainly appreciate those. I would communicate those through meetings with staff, meetings that I am in in the public, on my monthly newsletter, Facebook. One of the things that I hope to do is to get a lot more likes on our Facebook page because we can do a lot of quick information from our Facebook page. We can also post our newsletter and so on there. But just starting with those kinds of things and then keep the communication going. And like I told our staff this morning, this is more than just me or more than just you, this is something that everybody in our district needs to do, communicate those needs and facts to the community, because we can't do it all alone. We're part of the community and the community is part of us.
And you've already made one commitment on writing bi-monthly newsletters.
That's right.
Paper, so.
That's right.
You've already made that step already.
That's right.
Yeah. Any further discussion about goal two?
Well, I just heard feedback this morning from the people that were at, at the meeting, and they particularly liked goal two.
Very good.
You, you guys did great work on Saturday, it was fun.
Do we need, we need, did we vote on the first one? I've already lost my mind.
You, make a motion on both if you wanna adopt both, but you'll, the second one, if you wanna add those words.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would recommend to the board that we add the, the language, USD two ninety will communicate the facts and needs, the, the facts and our needs regarding district finances, personnel and facilities to the community.
I, I would also put in, if we're gonna get that specific, add curriculum, mission to educator kids, I mean, it's, it's just not those three.
I'd agree.
I guess I, I'd still like the simpleness of our needs, but.
So do I.
Because once you start spelling it out, what one do you leave out?
Yeah.
Like curriculum.
I don't know, it, it's.
You could say that USD two ninety will communicate our district's fact, need, facts and needs to the community, and then that would be everything. I think that's a decision that you don't have to make.
Or you could, yeah, say that USD twenty will communicate the facts about our district and our needs to the community.
Then that changes it a little bit. When you put in about, then it changes the meaning.
Okay.
I like the way it is, simple.
Yeah, I do too.
You wanna leave it simple?
It, it, it leaves it more open and more broad about what we can communicate, what we will communicate.
Says we'll communicate the facts, which I, I consider that truth and what's there, transparent. And our needs, that's all encompassing. It could be from new tires on the buses to pigs in the blanket at the, at school lunches.
Or cinnamon buns.
And cinnamon rolls. Chili.
Chili and cinnamon rolls, you got it.
That's a lot.
With.
Depends on how you look at it, Susan.
Exactly, that's true.
Happy kids.
Got it. Okay. I, I can be happy either way, I really can, I just tend to wanna add more words.
I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the USD two ninety Board of Education two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen goals as presented in the attachment.
Second. A motion by Dennis and a second by Bill. He beat Tim by half a word. To approve the board goals as presented on the screen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in papers, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Now I gotta put my glasses back on.
Agenda work plan.
Agenda work plan, Dr. Stroh.
Thank you, I think those are very good goals. Okay, so let's look at this board agenda work plan. And if I could just do a little explanation, it's very important to me as a new person to know what kinds of things that the board, what kinds of reports that the board needs. And so as I, I've spoken with you and as we work through things, these are some things that come up, have come up over and over. So you'll see that this is a draft, and I want you to have time this evening to talk about it and feel free to change. We can change any of those things that, that you like in terms of wording, in terms of reports that you would like to have, and also in terms of time, where do you want those to fall? So, so I'm proposing this in, in, with two main columns, and the first one is operational expectations. And those are just things that are part of our operations, it's not about testing, it's about the programs that we do, our operations. And so there are some things that come up over and over. For example, I was try, I was trying to get the first one on schedule, but we'll have to move that till the twenty-sixth, and that's the OE, which to me means operational expectations, facilities planning, the community survey and maintenance. We have a maintenance plan, we need to talk more about that survey, and so that would be a report that I would do, just to give the board information all at the same time, you'd be able to ask questions and have discussion, it gives the community an opportunity to hear that discussion as well. And so I go on down to other things that I've included in this board agenda work plan include Kansas college and career standards, you know, we're calling Common Core standards Kansas college and career standards. That's a critical piece for this next year, and so we need to keep that at the forefront in terms of our operational expectations. So that's gonna be a report that's gonna be critical for all of you, for me and for our staff and community because things are changing greatly. Then another one is early childhood education, that's a compliance issue, and there are some wonderful things going on with our early childhood program that would benefit the board, the community and all of us greatly just from understanding that. And then we go on down, community, communications, community engagement, all of those kinds of things, that's another critical piece, particularly in light of the goals that we just, that you just adopted. Instructional programs, that's a very big part of the goal that, that, the first goal that you adopted. As a board, I believe that you need to know what are those instructional programs and what kind of results are they producing? And especially with the Kansas and career standards, what's coming up next? So I go on down, professional development, that's how we get there, what are we doing with our staff, with our administrators, with everybody, so that we're continually, continuing to grow and learn as professionals. And then respectful treatment of stakeholders, you know, that's an often easy one to put off, that has to do with, with discipline of students, that has to do with number of complaints and how we handle those complaints. I think that's very critical. And then we go on down, teacher evaluation, principal evaluation, that, we can certainly take that off, leave it on, it's up to you. There are some legal limits in terms of what we can do and hear about teacher evaluation, both in open session and in executive session, so there might be some of these that, that you wanna cross off, and that's fine. And then you can see asset protection, we have a lot of assets in the, in the district, and so my thinking is, in districts I've been in the past, we've always had a report at some time about what does our inventory look like, how are we protecting those assets? That's another one, it's completely, completely up to you. You can see that we have a lot of space, so we can change those around and so on. The second part of that is monitoring, results monitoring. So part of our instructional programs and part of, the most important thing that we do is teach students, and the most important thing that students do is learn, and so we measure that learning on a continuous basis. State assessments are no longer the best way to measure it, there's, you could argue that state assessments were never the best way to measure that, but we have a lot of other measures that we can use for results monitoring. We have the, what we call MAP, which is measures of academic progress, we could use that, we could use a number of, of assessments. So in results monitoring, there are just some things that, that I've suggested, the first is AMO, that's the state assessment results, and that has to do with accreditation and so on. Reading results, social studies results, science results, math, and then we go on down to college and career ready skills. We can measure most of those, some of those we call soft skills and are, are not as easily measured. And then if you go to the next page, we have writing and we have digital citizenship. And again, be happy to add whatever reports, whatever results monitoring, results that you would like to see in that column, those are some that I'm familiar with, some that I feel that are most important.
What's digital citizenship?
Digital citizenship is how do you use technology? It means that we teach our kids how to be safe online, what sites to go to and what sites not to go to. It teaches our kids what are reliable research sites, like don't count on Wikipedia, and, and those kinds of things. So that's what digital citizenship is, are you, are you a good digital citizen, do you not text bad things to a friend? It encompasses a number of standards. I'm glad you asked that. Other questions that you have about?
One, one thing I would, I would like to see, and I don't know where the right place to put it is, is making the assumption that, that we're gonna be using McCrell this year, assuming the teachers vote to ratify the agreement. I would love an update as to how that's going in terms of implementation somewhere in the November timeframe.
Okay.
Is that one in March?
Yeah, the, the big one is in March, but just because it's new, I would love an update.
Okay.
Well, sometime in the October, I'm assuming that by mid-October, early November, we've done enough teacher evaluations on the new McCrell system, assuming it's implemented, that we have some ideas to how well it's going, you know, what, what are the administrators bumping up against in terms of how it's getting implemented, you know, those kinds of things. And I'm not saying I need a long extensive detailed report, but it would be nice to get an update.
Might I suggest something around December ninth because non-tenure teachers have to be evaluated within the first sixty days of school, and typically that happens the beginning part of November.
Sure, that's fine.
So, okay.
I'd like, I just would like it because it's new and different and different for both the administrators and the. I'd like, I just would like it because it's new and different and different for both the administrators and the teachers, I'd love to know how it's going.
Is that how others feel as well?
Sure. Before we crash and burn.
And I'm, and I would even, I would even be interested in hearing teacher point of view.
Okay. So David, are you proposing that, um, and taking off teacher principal evaluation on the 24th?
I don't know that I'm proposing that we take that off. I would just like to add
Okay.
the, the additional information because it's new and I, we'll call it results monitoring. I want to know how it's going.
Okay. We can do that. One thing we, we do need to change is the very first one. I would like to put the, um, facilities planning and community survey and maintenance, um, on August 26th and do two reports on that, on that day.
Okay.
Yeah, I can stress my, uh, sense of urgency on that matter.
On facilities?
I can't overstate my sense of urgency on that matter. Yeah. I, I think if we're going to get something done, which we need to get done, then we need to get cracking.
Yeah.
And we need to get community involved in that.
The, the items that are above the chart, technology, AVID, adult learning, early release, PLC. Are those embedded in some of the other operational expectations you have, or was that to be added later?
Those are, um, those are things that I, for example, technology services, um, is embedded in several of those, like instructional programs and so on. I put those at the top, um, be, and, and many of them are. The adult learning, probably not. The, or certainly early release PLC would be part of professional development and instructional programs. I put those there because I wanted to know if you want a separate report for each of those, um, or how do you want to do that? Those were other big issues, um, that I've heard that the board would like to know more about. So I put those up there. Um, I'm glad you asked that. We can put those in other reports, or we can pull those out separately, either way.
When's the best time to do adult learning? I mean, is there a, is, is that more of a summertime after we've concluded the year?
You know, I, um, I just met with, I can't remember her name, wonderful lady. And I have all that information. I could send you a report on Friday. I could, there are a number of ways we could do that. If that's a report then that you want at a board meeting, then we can certainly do that. But that's a pretty, here's the facts, here's the history, here's the financials on the adult.
Well, you know, just, just because we, we went through this last year, making a change in, in some of our adult ed offerings, it would be good to, to have that at some point. You know.
So you're thinking like October fif, 14th?
Somewhere in there, yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, the whole, the whole ball of wax, you know, just, how's it going?
We had another provider, and then we switched. So we want to know, are we doing the right thing, or was that the right thing?
Yeah, we just want to monitor it.
Certainly. And by then we'll have some numbers to compare last year to, to what we have this year. Okay? Tell me about, um, AVID and, um, early release and technology services. Would you like to plug those in separately?
We don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm too close to AVID to, to say, but I don't know if it's doing what we expect it to do.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how to measure that either, but, I mean, I'd be curious, and there are others who, I know who have questions about it. I don't know. But I'm probably too close to it to.
Now where's our first generation of AVID students? Are they, there are?
They did graduate?
I'd be curious actually to know what percentage of AVID students graduated and of what tier in their class, whether they were, you know, the top 10%, top 30%, you know. Do we have that information?
I guess my first question would be, what would be your expectation because if we're talking about truly AVID?
Well, my expectation is that every one of those went to college.
Yeah, AVID, AVID is, AVID is the, is the, uh, the average and slightly below average, and then trying to move them along.
Well, the hope is that they go to college.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, I'd be curious how many of those actually went on to.
All of them either went to the college or went to.
Don't be given the report before it's time, Dr. Cobb.
Let's see the data.
That's right. So, so if we did that, if, if you look at the next page, we have some open time in the spring. And June 9th or June 23rd might be a good time to do that because you'd have an extra year of, um, of data.
Why don't you plug it in there sometime?
Okay, June 23rd?
And if we're going to talk about early release and PLCs, it needs to be started in the fall or the, around Christmas or something because we have to publish calendars and approve a calendar sometime at the first part of the year.
Yeah.
And so it would be good to know if we're going to continue with that or not.
Yeah, good to know how that's going in advance of, of making those, those kinds of discussions.
Calendar development usually doesn't start till around February, and she has it scheduled for the end of January. Would that be enough to determine?
If I added it to professional development?
Yeah, I think it'd be okay to add it to professional development.
Susan, how do you feel about that?
That's fine with me. Just before we get in a time crunch with having to decide what all we're doing, on the counter, get all the books printed and. We don't want to be a destructionist in that regard.
Okay, so the one thing you have left is technology services?
Well, they probably require at least three or four meetings, right, Andy? No, I'm just teasing. I'm teasing.
I think as we move forward with our adoption of technology and how we're going to roll that out, one-to-one initiatives, those are going to be needed.
I definitely think we want to, we want to look at it in the spring.
Okay. March 10th?
Sure.
With lots of video and lots of music.
Yeah.
Can I show you a YouTube video?
YouTube. I was hoping for strobe lights.
Hey.
I don't think it'd be a bad idea at some point to put in, uh, an evaluation of the board, by the board, self-evaluation.
Okay.
To see if we're, um, serving the public, if we're being accountable, if we're, uh, being responsive.
That to me is a June time.
And that can be, yeah, that can be later in the year, but I, I think we need to do that to honestly assess how we're doing and.
Sure.
Have we done that around the superintendent's evaluation?
And there are a number of research-based instruments, so maybe I'll just start collecting those and send them out to you from time to time to consider.
Yeah, I thought you might know some ways to do that.
Good. Okay. Okay, so we've taken care of the list, um, at the top. In board development, the, um, superintendent evaluation on October 14th and January 27th, those are both driven by statute. So can't change those. Well, you can change the date a little bit. You can go a little later in October and a little later in January, but if you have trouble, you might want to get things done early. Other, other questions or ideas?
One thing that could we do this, this year coming up since we're making a master plan? Could we shoot for like May 12th or April 14th to list out any changes in, in the, the operating procedure manuals or the policies for each individual schools?
Handbooks, okay.
For the handbooks for, for any policy changes.
So that it happens before the end of the school year?
Well, I, I guess one more step. I'd like to have it like April 14th. Give us time to really digest it, or eight, May 12th, and then actually have time to ask questions in a work session. And then make the motion on June the 9th. Sometime that there's a process where we can not run through, but actually see it ahead of time and, if we do have questions, it's not just quickly. Now, we'll understand that if we have a state statutes, uh, change with our wonderful leaders in the PICA that happens on, uh, June the 30th, when they're in their 200th day of, uh, session, I understand those changes, but it'd be nice to get a time to have a little more process.
And don't their books have to be printed like in April?
So we're talking about handbooks and policy because those go hand in hand. Okay.
Right.
Just, just a little, get it one time and then we have time to.
Good point.
You mean you really want to think about those, huh?
Yeah.
So when you look at results monitoring, are you okay with, with those, um, those results? Is there anything you would add in that particular column?
Behavior.
Somehow. Champs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way to measure that? I don't know. But definitely, maybe by number of office referrals or?
Some sort, some sort of report on, on behavior, behavior and, you know, are we making positive impacts on behavior and?
And we've, we've identified that as one of our biggest needs, and so if we need to hit it a couple times, we ought to.
Okay, right now I'm going to put it down for June 23rd because we, um, we do, um, emergency safety intervention reporting and so on, and so that will give us even more data. And it may be the case that I can also get you some preliminary data, um, and information earlier in the year, um, maybe like February 24th. I'm going to kind of pencil that in, um, just as a preliminary report. But it, but it takes a while when you implement a behavior program to really show results. So I would just caution, but I would be happy to do that.
Is there, is there a results monitoring portion or a presentation of some kind directly related to special ed?
You know, we can certainly do that. My feeling is that they're all our kids. And so when we sort, when we start to sort and sift out particular achievement gap areas, then, then we don't necessarily do the very best for those kids. So my, my, um, thinking was, for example, in the monitoring, when we do reading results, you'll have the results for all, all our, um, achievement gap areas, whether it's free and reduced or, um, students with IEPs or whatever. If you'd like a separate special education report, um, and you'd like to define what's in that report, I'm sure, um, Dr. Ray would be more than happy to do that. It's up to you.
I want one, but I don't know, but I don't know how to ask for it. I have to think about that.
And, and, and you bring up a good point. Just because something is not on here doesn't mean that you can't ask for that report. This is a, a work plan. Um, this is so that you know what to expect, and this is so that I know what your needs are and what kinds of information I need to collect. That doesn't mean that if something happens with the legislature or the Kansas Department of Education or something else, that we can't talk about it. We certainly can. This is just the overall master plan of the reports that you can expect to get. But we can certainly add things later on if you wish. Okay, so if I might just go through here, um, and, and talk about the changes before, um, we make, you make a motion. On August 26th, you're going to be getting an operational expectation report, um, about facilities planning, the community survey and maintenance. And also you'll be getting a report, um, about the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. On September 9th, you will get a report on early childhood education, um, and the compliance, um, issues that we face. On, um, September 23rd, communication, community engagement. Um, and I've listed some of those things that, that we'll talk about, and I even have special education listed there. On October 14th, adult learning, um, and we'll compare last year to this year. October 28th, instructional program. Then we go down to December 9th, um, an update on McCrell, um, um, teacher evaluation. Then I have on January 27th, professional development, and that will include early release. February 24th, respectful treatment of stakeholders at all levels, number of complaints, um, chain of command and so on. March 10th, technology services. March 24th, um, teacher principal evaluation. April 28th, asset protection, and May 12th, handbooks and policy with the adoption, uh, with motion and adoption of policies and handbooks by June 9th. And, um, June 23rd, AVID report. The next column, results monitoring. We begin on October 14th, um, with AMO state assessment results, and that will be for the results, um, from this past year. November 11th, reading results. No, December 9th, social studies results. January 13th, science results. February 10th, math results. February 14th, um, we'll have a preliminary report on behavior and champs in particular. On March 10th, college and career ready skills. And on May 12th, writing results. June 9th, digital citizenship. And on June 23rd, um, a full report on behavior, um, discipline and champs.
Dr. Stroh, I'd like just to ask a question. When you're talking about writing, reading and math results, results of what?
We'll look at the measures that we already have in place. For this year, we'll, we'll compare that with the, um, state assessments, um, MAP assessment, the assessments that we have with our reading series at the elementary and so on.
When we talk about assessments, are we going to be talking about this coming year's assessment? They just released that the assessment window only could be open until, uh, like April 1st, the last seven weeks of school.
The results that, the results that, that I'll report will always be last year's.
Now, do you want to stay later with the big chief tablet and hand tabulate them for us? Be real time that way.
And then in board development, we have superintendent evaluation in November, January, and board evaluation June 9th. Additions or corrections?
Do we need to add like the district meetings under board development? Because we attend district meetings, don't we? I mean, or is that just for when we have our meetings? Do district meetings, statewide meetings, all that stuff comes quarterly or?
Well, see, they've changed their format under Dr. Heim's approach. So the normal district meetings, we've got our legislative meeting in January of Paolista. Paolista has that.
Yeah.
And then, um, some of the KSB district meetings have changed all day instead of the evening meetings.
Right.
I mean, I don't know what the, I know we have a fall one coming up, but I'm not having.
And, and so, so I tried to make this, um, a schedule for reports that I'll give to you. We can do a schedule that has those kinds of things on it and maybe put this together so that you have more like a long-term plan for, um, what board meetings look like. You'll always have a financial report, um, and other reports as they come up, you'll always have personnel. Or most of the time, you'll have personnel report. Sometimes, um, different things will come up. So I don't want you to think that this is chiseled in stone and this is all we'll do. It's not. We'll continue with, you know, we need to approve this contract and we need to talk about this and that and the other thing. That's part of what board meetings are about. This is more just the focus of the kinds of information that I need to provide for you.
And you want a motion of approval?
Before you do that, I didn't hear you mention on your list for the early release PLC when you were reading that back.
Mm-hmm.
What date was that under?
January 27th. It's, it, it's going to go with professional development. They're tied, um, very tightly together.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd move accept the work plan agenda as it has been amended.
Motion to approve the work plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Linda, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board reports. Do we have any board reports? Anybody been to any?
Well, I haven't been to a meeting yet at Lincoln, but I did get a chance to stop by Eugene Field, uh, when they were installing cabinets. And if you haven't had a chance to, I suggest you do it. It looks fantastic.
In the lounge, yeah.
Teacher lounge, yes. And there are.
Yeah, I saw those.
And actually, I'd like to actually publicly thank, uh, the team that was there from Home Depot. Krista Cummins, Jason Sandberg, Mike Toplicker, Julio Sanchez, Greg Krentz, uh, and Lindsay Lighten. Julio Sanchez, Greg Krentz, and Lindsay Leitner. And a lot of, a special thanks to Lori Catlin from the Harvard, the effort she put into that room and finding the donations. So, I think it's fantastic that Eugene Field has such a, a strong PTO member that believes wholeheartedly in that school and, and in the kids and the teachers there.
Yep, I agree. Any other reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to five point oh-one, athletic trainer support agreement. This is with Ransom Memorial Hospital.
Are you leaving us?
Kinda give us a, a quick update on this one as to what it is we're looking at?
For athletic training services, it's pretty much identical to last year's. It's one hundred dollars and more expensive this year than last year. So, that's the only difference.
I'd make a motion to approve the athletic trainer support agreement with Ransom Memorial Hospital for some.
A motion by Dennis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Gotta give it to Bill. Just a hair in front. I think it's 'cause you're sitting close by. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the train, athletic trainer support agreement signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. She stepped out for a few minutes.
I think to recuse herself from that vote.
Yeah, she probably recused herself since she works for them. Okay, approve changes for the special ed handbook. Waiting for it to download. Okay. What are, what are the nature of the changes that we are looking to approve? You wanna let the new, the new special ed guy talk?
Gotta speed.
Come up here to the microphone.
We gotta record your voice.
Yep.
For sturdy reasons.
Absolutely. The changes are fairly minimal. The primarily, primarily, they're in the area of our life skills programming, which was designated as a, the qualifications for that were designated as three standard deviations below the norm. It's a technical difference that I think I understand why the rationale was there to make the programming more difficult to get into life skills programming, but the fact is we're a needs-based program, needs-based district, and so regardless of label of child, we're going to be able to program for them and place them appropriately in the classrooms that they need to be in. But I changed the language of that to reflect two standard deviations below the norm instead of three, simply because two standard deviations is the state criteria for intellectual disability, and that's primarily where the life skills programming, it comes into play. I didn't see a need to go more restrictive than that. Three standard deviations would be IQs of fifty-five or less.
Right.
Fits a very small minority. Two standard deviations below captures one percent or the first percentile and approximately one percent of the population. So, I believe it was designed to keep the programming more difficult to, to qualify for. Again, since we're gonna be programming according to needs, it's really kind of superfluous. So, that was one of the changes. The other change was to, was in reflection of the, the adjustment to our preschool programming, which I, without getting, like one of my jokes, long and bald and not very funny, I'll, I'm running that risk at this point, but.
Run one by us, I don't care.
Basically, our preschool programming has been very self-contained. We've attempted to gain peer models in the past with moderate success, and at the moment that I stepped into this role, our PALS program was designed to be a self-contained classroom. We've made efforts at this point in time to integrate that along, to integrate it with the Eugene Fields preschool program, to have some of our students on IEPs at that program, and also to have some of the students who qualify for what was formerly known as the at-risk preschool program. This, this year was renamed the state pre-kindergarten program. It's semantics. It's same qualifications. They must meet one of eight criteria. Prior to this year, there were very few kids with special needs that were included in that because they only have limited slots and they didn't wanna lose any state funding. If we make some of those slots available over at our PALS program and bring what are considered to be typical peers into that program, we can have the best of both worlds and have two integrated programs. The efforts that we have made to do that for this school year have been very successful. We've had some students that have enrolled in our program, and conversely, we've placed some students with IEPs, primarily students with pretty mild disabilities, speech, language, some developmental delay in that program. So, that's the efforts that we're making to integrate those two programs, and I felt that that should be reflected in the handbook as well. Those programs will continue to grow, and the reasons for that are many. Primarily, they're, we have indicator six, which the state responds to, both six A and six B, which reflect the LRE for our students with disabilities who are ages three to five. We're not the only district in the world that does this, especially not in the state of Kansas, but Kansas is going to be under fire at this point from the federal Department of Education to amend that, and last year was the first year that baseline data was collected on that indicator. So, we, we, I firmly believe that due to that analysis of that data that shows that thirty-five percent of our preschools are not, are segregated and not integrated at all and do not have a least restrictive environment for our kiddos, that mandate's gonna come down from the state, as they will be forced to from the federal government.
Is that related to the Olmstead Act or the Olmstead decision, I guess?
No, sir. It's not. No, they're separate. It's one of our compliance indicators. The state has to respond to, and we have to respond to the state as an LEA. And I think that's pretty much the changes that are included in that.
How about the evaluation procedure change? If I saw correctly, that was one word. Is that right?
You were right.
Oh, sorry, yeah, in our child find?
Yeah.
Yes, because of the early release change, we have changed our preschool hours to be, or our preschool days of service to be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, because we've expanded, I'm sorry, I shouldn't mention this. We did expand our, the hours of our early childhood programming in the PALS program. It was two hours a day last year, and it has been for some time. The Eugene Fields program and the requirements for that particular program are for four hundred and sixty-five hours a year or the equivalent of three hours a day, five days a week for thirty-three weeks. I'm not doing the math real fast here, but that's, that was the requirement for that, and I felt like it was a disservice to our children who have been qualified as students with disabilities to serve them less than that, primarily because some of them are duly qualified. Some of them would meet the qualifications for the at-risk program, and they would also meet the, meet the requirements for IDEA Part B services as a child with a disability. For us to serve them less and not to offer that, some of the same amenities as that program seemed to me to be a little discriminatory and would seem to any lawyer worth his salt to be the same, so I didn't wanna take that risk. And so, it seemed to me to be the prudent thing to do, not only for the legal reasons, but also because it's the right thing to do. Because we didn't wanna have parents faced with refusing services to get more preschool hours. And that would have, had to been the, the case, because we, while we get funding for the students on Part B, and we also get funding, about the commensurate amount of funding for students at the at-risk, at-risk program, you cannot qualify them for both and receive funding through the same, through two different streams. So, that was just to clear that up, and so Wednesday, to get back to the original question, Wednesday was the day that we have now changed to be our child find day, because that's the day that we will not be seeing preschool students, and we screen students on that day in the community for those kids suspected of potentially having a disability.
Just a, a minor thing, but if I remember right, we no longer are working with OWIT. It has changed to Tiny K?
Correct. We still work with them.
Is OWIT still in existence? I thought it was pulled into.
It's Tiny K. We kind of, it's, we kinda still refer to them as OWIT.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, 'cause it was, it listed OWIT in there, that's why I was wondering.
I don't know that that nomenclature is, I don't know that it's completely, I think they just changed it to Tiny K. I could be wrong, but I thought they just changed it to Tiny K for.
I understand it had something to do with the, the fiduciary? Thank you. Tiny K's the fiscal agent, right?
Okay.
Just something to look at. I don't know. It may mean nothing.
I'll check into that. If that change needs to be made, I'll resubmit.
Any other questions? For Dr. Ray. If I get it right.
No, but I applaud the.
What, your last name? I forgot it.
It's Ray. You're right, absolutely.
We're getting closer.
I applaud the efforts, and I move that we approve the changes as presented.
Second. A motion by Bill and a second by Susan to approve the changes to the special ed documents as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. We have a, an old art kiln. This is item five point oh-three, that needs to be declared a surplus property. I understand a new kiln has been bought. You wanna, is there anything else you wanna add to that?
The old kiln wasn't working right. There were some electrical issues and so on, and so we were able to purchase a new one for around three thousand dollars, I think. Is that right?
We were going to have basically a thousand dollars of maintenance costs to make it work through this year. We can buy a brand-new kiln for three thousand dollars. We've had this kiln for twenty-plus years, and we've certainly got our, our log use out of it.
So, so we, we want it to be declared surplus. We haven't found a, a place for it yet. We think we can sell it, but we don't know for how much and so on. I know that there's a place in Wichita that purchases old kilns and, and so on. So, we need to declare it surplus so that when we know, we can move pretty quickly.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Brian and a second by Susan to declare the old kiln as surplus property. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, of declaring the old kiln as surplus property signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, item five point oh-four, an approved resolution for the sale of the C-Tech House. And as I understand it, this is something that the title company needs.
Move. Go ahead.
So, Mr. President, I move that we approve resolution one oh-five for the sale of the C-Tech House.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution for the sale of the C-Tech House. Is there any discussion?
And even our, our motion wasn't good enough the last time we approved a sale.
Well, they want, what they're, what they're wanting is to be able to designate the fact that I signed the documents as I'm, I'm representing the board. So.
I don't know if I trust David with this responsibility.
It's scary. It really is.
Do you wanna be added to watch him sign it, Bill? Would you volunteer for that?
I already signed it, by the way.
It's too late.
We have a motion and a second, so is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your left hand.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's left-handed month.
Yeah.
Because August is always left-handed month.
That's right. Besides that, I was getting bored. Okay.
So, did you get the check?
I didn't get the check. She did.
You got the check already? Well, go ahead.
Motion carries seven zero, by the way. Okay. Executive session for negotiations. Brian, how long do we need?
Oh, I think we can probably bring it down to about ten.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, with the board going to executive session, the purpose discussing matters relating to employer, employee, and negotiations, whether or not in consultation, the representative or representatives of the body have the board return to the open meeting at eight, ten o'clock in this room. The executive session is required to protect the district's right to confidentiality and its negotiating position and of the public interest.
Do you wanna, wanna include Dr. Stroh and Dr. Kraus?
Oh, yes.
Just asking. Okay, the motion here, second here. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand again. Motion carries seven zero. We're back in.
Mr. President, I move we come back in open session.
We have a motion to go back into open session. We have a second.
Second.
Tim gives us the second.
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes seven zero. We're back in open session.
We're not doing executive anymore. We don't need executive.
No.
Don't need executive? Okay. All right, so we will skip item number eight and move on to item number nine, announcements.
No, we got personnel report.
Personnel report.
I've got two reports out there, so I must, I've tried to look. It looks the same. I move to approve the personnel report that's on our board docs.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel reports?
Second.
It's a second by Brian? Any discussion? Hearing none. Anybody still wanna read before I call for a vote?
I'm just looking, but no, you go ahead.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the personnel report signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Okay, now we're ready for announcements. Got any announcements?
It starts on Friday. That's the greatest announcement there could possibly ever be.
There you go.
There you go.
Kids are back.
Any other announcements? Then I would gratefully accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We are adjourned.